Everyone. I pledge and remain standing for the land acknowledgement statement. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Salamaka City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Ananda Waka. The people of the great hill, the Seneca people on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaka School District now stands in whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples and their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaka City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Just for information, uh, board member Brad Hurley is excused. Board member Dale Colton is via Zoom and Kerry John will be here, but he's just running a little bit. So we need, um, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are a couple of changes. Um, we added the address where board member Dale Colton is attending by Zoom. If anyone would like to go, um, he is currently at Lake Elford, Florida, and you are welcome to, uh, visit him to attend now. Um, we added three C, which is the budget presentation proposal point. We, um, added five C and five F, which are travel, uh, requests for Amy Crowley and Lacey Hill. Um, we added item seven I, which is a lease agreement for Broad Street and Bureau Eagle Street. And lastly, we added, um, item seven J, which is a CA-BOC nomination proposal.
With that then, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Christian, second by Ted. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed, abstained. Bill, you give it a thumbs up? Yeah, give it a thumbs up. Motion carried. All right, next we'll move on to our presentation. So first we had Turner Construction.
Great. I am going to turn it over to Mr. Julian Schnapp, who will introduce, um, those individuals that are presenting. Before we do so, I just wanted to acknowledge that Mr. Schnapp was our former construction superintendent with Turner. He has subsequently or since taken a, uh, essentially a promotion with Turner and is now working at, uh, the pit. Or I guess it's no longer just a pit. I think things are going up, um, at the new stadium. So I think on behalf of us, we really want to acknowledge the hard work and we know you're still behind the scenes doing a lot of work, but, um, we wouldn't agree where we are today without the hard work and oversight that you've provided to us. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That means a lot.
Yes.
Definitely took a lot of pride being here for five years and helping build everything that's fortunate enough to have the opportunity to work with you. Worked a lot on, so it was a lot of fun and looking forward to continuing things down here. But it's a couple of new faces here that I'd like to introduce.
Thanks.
Certainly. Um, so it's been a little while since we have had a construction update. And since then, Doug Cloud's joined us here since, um, middle of November was his first day down in Salamaka. Um, assuming the superintendent position, running the, the field work and, and David Zoo, who's been here with, with me for over two years now, um, as, has been behind the scenes, um, with the engineering work as well. Um, for phase three point four and had a field presence as well while I was here. Uh, they're, they're the new boots on the ground, day to day team. That's, that's around the construction projects and like Mark had mentioned. Support from promoted up at the Buffalo Bill Stadium project right now, but always a phone call away. I think, I think so. But that'll turn over to the Dave to pick off the presentation.
So my name is David. I'm there to near put Salamaka project. We'll start here. I'll give you a brief update on phase three, three point four. So place three point four, that's the district office addition and your renovation to the whole district and an area. As of right now, we're in active construction. So some of what we're saying could be the milestone of our construction front. The interest of our bringing in the tree, at least the drywall tape and finishing, finding first code. With the exception of the clear story, as you can see in this photo on the right hand corner. The clear story gets a wood ceiling that goes all the way around and on the top. And then the beams that you see across that actually gets it with the newer texture and that wraps everyone out. And then you will also have these like three D clouds suspended. And then as for your renovation, the ceiling and flooring is hundred percent complete, as you can tell from these pictures. And after the presentation, we'll be doing a walkthrough of renovation and addition. Like fixtures and devices are also installed in the renovation area. And for upcoming scheduled milestones, the renovation area, we're looking to turn that over February 29th of this year. So there's a lot of huge lobby area of collaboration space. You got a couple of offices in there and two bathrooms that were renovated. And then as for the additions, some of those that's going to be coming out, this case, we're going to network for the renovation. Additional ceiling tiles, we want twenty four, according to, uh, eleven of twenty four in the new edition. And flooring, when we walk that space or the additions, they say you're not going to see any floors in there, but by the time three fifteen, kids will have all the flooring, the carpet, terraces installed. And as in terms of substantial completion date, we're targeting four, five for the brand new addition. And that, like I mentioned earlier, two twenty nine for the renovation. The last part of this floor, what's basically what for is the deep in the fire replacement. Which is going to take place or is going to start in April of twenty four, and that's going to be updated by May of twenty four. Which you're going to probably won't see much, maybe like a crane that will be set back there. And then before we move on to the faceboard update, so this is a picture that's taken from the outside. You're not going to see this until we turn over the addition, but that's a new unisex bathroom that's on the exterior. And that main purpose of that bathroom is going to be helping with the tennis court and baseball. So the school and design, they're always thinking about ahead and you know, the next stage is coming up. So I'll have Doug take over basically.
Thanks, David. Uh, yeah. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Doug Cloud and I'll be the next project supervisor. Uh, telling shoes of Julian, who did a great job down here. Um, actually, let me go to the next one, please. Thank you. All right, phase four, we're going to start with the rear building and the track and field. Those are going to be our two construction projects that are going to start actually the beginning of next month. We're going to start those. Hopefully we won't run into any issues. Uh, I see everything running smoothly down here. Um, we've done all our boots on the groundwork, getting everything started. So the track and field, that's going to be finished by February of twenty twenty five. Um, we will start the middle, middle school renovation, um, that's going to start in June this year and will be completed before you come back to school next year. So that's just a small amount of work on the inside, some door work and a little bit of classroom work. And then as we get into next year, we're going to start working on tennis courts, softball and a practice field. Tennis courts and softball are going to start in March of twenty twenty five. The practice field will probably start in June of twenty twenty five. We should have all those completed tennis courts by August of twenty twenty five, October twenty twenty five will be stopped off. And then the practice field will be completed by October twenty five. Close out for November twenty twenty five and we should be completed by December of twenty twenty five. I don't know if anybody has any questions about the upcoming schedule four, but that's where we're heading. One thing I wanted to add, just with the part of the phasing and everything before, um, I was no longer full time down here. Had a hand in the discussions and the planning for this and the promise behind the schedule was to really only lose the tracking field for one track and field season and then simultaneously with, with tennis. So the idea was tennis work happening in twenty twenty five, but leaving the existing tennis courts in place, operational until these were completed and turned over. And then in the fall, early fall of twenty twenty five, doming the old and putting your discus in to finish that practice field. So there was some thought behind it and organization with the administration to try to minimize the, the downtime and the, the different playing.
Thank you.
All right, now do we get to take a field trip?
Absolutely.
All right.
Let's do it.
All right. Okay. Sure. Okay. All right.
Yeah, I'm going to take a brief intermission.
We're going to take a brief intermission. Um, and if the administrative team would like to come and take a look at where, what the new addition looks like at this kind of time, they can do so. We should be back in about ten minutes.[604.53]
And then the one on the far right is our current tenth grade class, the class of twenty twenty six. As eighth graders, they were two oh two point nine for the RIT score. As ninth graders, they were two oh seven point eight and as twel- as tenth graders, they're two twelve. So again, real nice growth for our ELA and our tenth graders. For the next slide. The next slide deals with our math growth from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three. And we have, on the far left is our current eighth grade class. Again, as sixth graders, they scored two oh five point six as an average for their RIT. As seventh graders, they were two ten, and as eighth graders, a two fourteen. So again, continued growth for those students fall to fall for the last three years. As ninth graders, we had a RIT score of two oh seven point six as seventh graders. And then they hovered pretty much steady at two seventeen point eight for eighth and ninth grade. So as we, as we compare these to the national norms, our current eighth graders. When they were in sixth grade, they again had a two oh two point five. The, the national norm was a two ten point one seven. Remember, these national norms are actually pre-COVID norms that were set. They haven't adjusted anything. I don't know, we're just gonna compare it to that because that is still the benchmark that you were going back. As seventh graders, again, they had a little bit of a dip. They were at one ninety four and the national norm was at two fourteen. And then as eighth graders, they, they made up some ground, again, two oh six compared to two eighteen for the national norm. So for the current ninth graders, this is the class of twenty twenty seven. Again, comparing those scores to the national norms. When they were in seventh grade, two oh eight, the national norm was two fourteen. As eighth graders, two oh nine, and the national norm was two eighteen. So we fell a little bit from the national norm. And then as ninth graders, two twelve with a two eighteen national norm. So we closed that gap a little bit as ninth graders. And then the tenth graders again showed good growth and has closed gap each year from seventh, or excuse me, from eighth to ninth. And then again, ninth to tenth. So currently, they're at two twelve, the national norm's at two twenty one. As we look at the eighth grade, again, comparing these to the national norms. As, as sixth graders, their RIT score, average RIT score was a two oh five. National norms at that time was two fourteen for the sixth grade. Seventh grade, they went to a two fourteen and the national norm was a, a two twenty. So they made a good, good amount of growth there. And then this past year, as eighth graders, there was a little bit of fall off. We're at two ten right now for the RIT score and a two twenty four national norm. Ninth graders, this current ninth grade class over the last three years has made some good progress. As far as how they're relating to the, the national norms. They were at two oh seven as, as seventh graders, two twenty was the national norm at that point in time. Eighth graders, they closed the gap pretty good. Again, they were at two twenty, the national norm was two twenty four. And currently, they're at two seventeen as ninth graders with a national norm of two twenty six. As far as the eighth grade assessments from the twenty two, twenty three school year, this was from the spring. This is a cell anchor results compared to New York State results. The first one is the ELA. And if you look, we have level one students. We had seventeen percent of our students in level one. New York State also had seventeen percent in, in level one. Where, where we really try and focus is our proficiency, which is levels threes and levels four. And if you look, our proficiency rate was forty six percent, which is a little bit behind the, the New York State proficiency rate of fifty five percent. For the math grade state assessment, math, I guess, across the board is a struggle for New York State. Their, the, the proficiency rate for New York State is forty one percent. We came in at, at twenty five percent. So obviously, that's a, that's an area of concern. It's been a concern. We've put some things into place the second half of the year to try and help address some of that. We'll talk about that a little bit later. As far as the eighth grade science assessment from last school year, we actually outperformed the state in, in this area. We had fifty eight percent proficiency. So we had forty seven percent of level three, eleven percent at level four. On the state was at thirty seven percent for level three and ten percent. They had proficiency rate of forty seven. But New York State assessment and math, or excuse me, science, we did, we outperformed the state. So that was, that was, that was a nice little feather for, for that. As far as the percent regions of our students meeting state benchmark in June of twenty twenty three. ELA, we were at eighty six percent that met, met the state benchmark. Algebra was eighty five percent. Chemistry was eighty nine percent. Living environment was eighty seven percent. U S history was ninety seven percent. Geometry was at sixty two percent. So that was a little bit low. That was an area we needed to look at. Algebra two was at ninety six percent, earth science eighty six percent, and global studies was ninety five percent.
When you, when you say that, you mean eighty six percent of the students? Or eighty five percent of the students have met the requirements?
For New York State, yes. Yes. Okay. And just as a, as a note, that was, we were still kind of in the COVID rules during that time. So it wasn't necessarily the sixty five that they needed to get.
Okay.
Okay. Those students though are, I mean, a lot of those students have retaken those tests to try and meet the sixty five. Because although it does, you know, they're still, we're still promoting that. So they're trying to improve those grades. If we take a look at the graduation rates in June of twenty twenty three. What I have up here is the district graduation rates. I'll also share with you with the high school graduation rates. That was clarified for me this, this morning with Mrs. Dudek. So what we have up there is, is the district graduation rates. These include everybody from all the different BOSI centers that, that might go to either big picture or wherever. So, and we have a broken down for the four year graduation rate, which would have been the cohort of two thousand nineteen. The five year graduation rate, this would be the two thousand eighteen cohort. And then the six year graduation rate, which is the two thousand seventeen cohort. So we still have students graduating after six years, which is, to me, uh, really says a lot about them and, and their dedication and willingness to continue to, to pursue their education. So for a four year graduation rate, we had seventy nine point four percent. This is district by Native American students and the four year graduation rate was seventy nine point five percent. If we focus in specifically on the high school itself, the all students four year graduation rate was eighty six point nine percent. And the Native American students' graduation rate was eighty seven point five percent. And again, that was just for our high school students. For the five year graduation rate for the district was eighty three percent. For native students, it was at seventy nine point five percent. For the high schools specifically, a five year graduation rate was eighty eight point two percent. And the five year Native American student graduation rate was ninety point six percent. And then as we look at the all students for six years, for the district was eighty nine point five. And Native American students for six year was ninety point one four. And then for the high school, again, that was district. For the high school, all students, six year was ninety one point two. And for our Native American students, just at the high school, it was eighty nine point seven. So a lot of improvement over the last however many years. We were really struggling a number of, a few years back. So very happy with, with what the students are doing and how they're performing overall at this point in time. Go ahead to the next one. So a couple of other things that I just wanted to make note of. We did have, in the fall, we have student athlete awards that are given. We have individual ones. We also have team awards that are given. As far as the individual scholar athlete awards, the, the section recognizes anybody that is playing a sport that attains over a ninety five average. So we had cheerleading, we had eight athletes with over a ninety five average, individual athletes. Swimming had five athletes over ninety five. Cross country had one athlete over actually a ninety eight average. So that was outstanding. And then if we look at our individual, or excuse me, our team scholar athlete awards for the fall. Football had fifteen athletes that contributed to their team award, ninety two point nine, or two ninety percent. Was their average with the fifteen athletes. Volleyball, ninety two point five eight with athletes, with eight athletes contributing. Boys soccer had a ninety five point eight one with seven athletes contributing. Girls soccer at ninety two point nine with thirteen athletes contributing. And girls tennis with a ninety point eight four with four athletes contributing. So very happy with those. They all received certificates and, and little pins for that accomplishment. And then lastly, some of the things that we wanted to look at are some of the things that we've tweaked here throughout the course of this year. To try and add some extra supports, either whether it's in math or, or even ELA or even in a steam wave. So we've added certified math teachers to the Center for All tutoring room. We're able to juggle their schedules a little bit. So their Center for All students are referred there through MTSS. And they're provided individual instruction, in this case for math. We have pretty much every period of the day covered, except for, I think, I think it's period two on A day and period four on B day. Other than that, we have somebody in there, every period working with students in math. We've also added a TA in math. She had a math strength, so she was pushed into different classrooms, three different classrooms, to provide individual instruction or support to students throughout the course of the lesson. Keep students focused and, and reinforce whatever's going on in the lesson. We've also pulled struggling students to give them more individualized instruction and support from a larger group to a smaller group. So we've actually freed up a math teacher in two different periods to pull small groups of students to work with them individually from the classroom. They get their main instruction and they pull them out and give them that focus. And that can be juggled based on, really, whoever's in need that particular day or that particular week. So it fluctuates a little bit. Through our MTSS program, we've also increased the number of students in the Center for All for daily tutoring. We've added a TA to the maker space to help with supervision of students and helps, and help teachers when they're down there during different projects. Lastly, we also purchased earlier in the year the paper platform, which provides twenty four seven tutoring and academic support to all students. This, this platform is actually right on a class link. Teachers have been instructed how to do it. We went through and, and walked the students through actually how to log in. And we get a report as far as how many students are, are logging into it to request help. And again, it could be any time of the day. If they're home at nine o'clock at night, they can shoot a chat to this paper platform with a question and they automatically get a tutor coming back and helping them solve whatever is at any purpose. So that's, that's what we have. If you have any questions, more than happy to answer.
So were the supports that you put in, please, to try and help boost the kids that are struggling in math? Are you gonna retest to try to figure out if it's working? Or how do you, how do you know what you're doing is?
Yeah, so they will, we have another set of NWA. We just had one here in, in January. Those results are just starting to come through now. The math supports really got tweaked at the, at the end of the first semester. We were able to free up some teachers. If you remember, we had, I think, two staff members out in the fair leave. So we ended up getting back to full strength. So we're able to add those different supports in. So we also have a, an NWA that will come up in the spring to test them. Obviously, other state assessment as well from eighth grade. We'll be looking at those and monitoring those.
Anyone else have questions? Comments?
No, mine was about math too. And obviously, we're looking at last year's data, but I see the discrepancy. We're not doing bad in ELA, we're doing great in science, but we're struggling in math. And this is something that I've seen over the years, even with my own kids. Math has always been a struggle at all the grade levels. I guess a sidebar, what are we doing in the intermediate school with math?
Yeah, they're ready to play. We have core intervention. That's all students who follow through year three instruction. We have also had a goal for second year three instruction. So we have a, in the classroom for student group instruction. We've done the actual power hours, we're getting tutoring at school if needed. So we have a teacher saying, Erin Anatia has been working with the teachers in math coach. Who does the recognition of like building pieces of classrooms where they started to really take the concept in math and hard instruction in a different way for their actually thinking about their thinking. And there was showing their work and they're able to talk through the topic together and work with each other at the year. Yeah, I mean, just the regular intervention. I'm trying to get the students early and make sure that we're getting them to do before the evening.
So is that something new in the past couple of years? Or is that something we've been doing for a lot longer?
I wouldn't say that's anything new. I think it's pretty standard practice. Academically, but I think that over the last couple of years, we have, again, the process has improved. And we've been looking at data more effectively and having better conversations about instruction. How are we needing to use this is instead of just keep doing what we're doing, right? Providing more specialized, using diagnostics and being able to do the instruction that we're giving to small groups.
So how often are you looking at the data?
Well, maybe with data, with a great level, people look at data approximately every eight, seven weeks. And adjust interventions and have conversations about personal alignment and what we need to do better. We're maybe to do this too, as well. Encouraging them, meaning with people more frequently to look at classroom assessment data from their benchmarks, from their common assessments and just student work samples. Just to be able to, again, more diagnose. from their common assessments, and just student work samples, um, just to be able to, again, more diagnose, um, math needs and figure out how to get better support in the tier one for them as well.
But that was one of the things, we just had a conversation, we had administrative meeting just prior to this, and we were talking to Dr. Capello about literacy intervention and, and a literacy committee, and you know, she also indicated that, you know, math is not far behind, and we need to be doing similar things with math as far as having a, you know, not just a screening thing, but a diagnostic tool to actually meet the kids where they're needed, you know, uh, and meet, meet those, because it's not the same, you know, it's not the same skill deficit in each of the students. Each of them needs to have a prescriptive plan moving forward.
Okay, I mean, one of the things that we, like, we always see presentations from each building. Uh, I think, I think we'll probably do for a cross-presentation, what does it look like from six and seven over to eighth and ninth? What does it look like from first and second over to, I mean, second and third over to fourth and fifth? So that's something that we need to look at. How, how aligned are all these buildings when it comes to math? Because when I see an eighth-grade score that this, this is low, they just inherited those eighth graders. What are we doing at intermediate? And then the same thing, fourth graders coming in intermediate, but they're still at low, what are we doing at prospect? So across, across the board, what are we doing to make sure that we're all on the same page? And that these kids are getting the services they need consistently from early to old.
So, um, I can speak to that, um. One of the things that we do, and then when we have our meetings, like, um, I'm not sure if everyone knows, but, um, I meet with the principal, Dr. Beamer meets with the principals, we have four meetings, um, a month, we have one a week, and we have two-hour slots, and during these times, we actually talk about where you can continue with our continuing school improvement model. And one of the things that we've been looking at is, here are interventions, here are our outcomes. What can we do to get, you know, to increase performance? So now we're digging deeper, we're diving into what our, um, interventions look like. So just say, um, the interventionist will, uh, pull out, um, a child typically. We're in five or six-day cycles, so the contact time is now in place, we're very, um, mindful where there's thirty minutes, six days a week, um, or, um, the next, the next tier up is, um, i- it increases, so tier two is a little bit less than tier three, they get increased time, contact time. Um, we're looking at our diagnostic data now, and after an eight-to-ten-week look, when we see what's been, what interventions have been used, and I think that's been the difference. Or identifying what interventions, like instructional methodology, strategies, what specific, um, methods are we using, we try them for ten weeks, and then we make an informed decision with a pool of specialists, with all the teachers that have contact with each child, and we go through them one by one, and we take into play, into play just like the whole multi-tiered system of supports, we, we, we behavior-making, um, and impact is attendance and impact, like, right now, we're talking about what are we going to do to address our significant attendance issues? What are we going to do for children who are here to get instruction, that's what's impacting some scores. So now we're looking at areas in need of development and areas of strength. We're using the areas of strength to build, um, to meet areas in need of development. But that's all PD that we're working through right now, we're, um, mobilizing our, um, specialists, both math and ELA in the district, and we're coming together, we're gonna be evaluating our curriculum materials collectively. We're gonna be evaluating our assessments, what are our screening tools, what are our diagnostic tools? Is that information what we need to, um, create a diagnostic, prescriptive instructional plan for each child? So this is gonna be very individualized as we're moving along, but this is a process, and we're tweaking what we're doing. It's not just, you have some, you know, you're struggling, so the intervention's gonna work with you. Now we're looking at diagnostic, prescriptive instruction, actual diagnostic. That's what we're working for it right now.
Well, you, you threw in there the thing about the attendance. So as I look at this data that's given to us from eighth grade, science is doing great, we're doing awesome in science. We're doing okay in ELA, but we're doing poor in math. How does attendance have to do with any of that if we're doing so well in science? To me, science is something that must be working, ELA, so-so. Right now, just based on this, math isn't working. So specifically, how are we gonna fix it?
Well, that's what we're doing with our, with these, with these, um, two committees, um, I actually had it in my report for the night, and I could tell you a little bit about it. We're assembling district-wide, um, literacy development team and a district-wide math development team to examine what assessments we're using, the curriculum materials that we're using, what's working, what do we think is not doing a good job, what are we buying that's not working, what are we buying that's really giving us more bang for our buck with what's, what are we seeing performance of the children, you know, so it has to be collective. I would never sit in a chair and say, oh, that's good, and that's not, and that's good, we have to talk to all the people that are with the children, using the materials, and say, is this, is it what we need to get the information that we want? So I would say that, um, a collective, two collective teams looking at our materials or assessments, and then our instruction is really where we're gonna see some changes.
Are we comparing it to the test to say, okay, they tested fifty percent in this one area, but we're only spending ten percent of our time in this area of teaching it? So of course our kids aren't gonna be as well versed in it, because the national tests are focusing more at this area of math. But as a school, we're not focusing there, understand what I'm asking?
I think I do, um, I, I think what we're looking at to mentally and curricularize, what is, what does a fourth grader need to know? To be able to be successful in fourth grade, and then move on to fifth grade and be successful, what foundational skills were, um, or, um, taken up there to be able to learn and be successful in fifth grade? Each curriculum is different on every single grade.
Well, I know that, but I'm saying if we're testing against this national test, there's, a- and we're doing okay in science, maybe we're reading all of the right curriculum that's on that national test. But maybe for math, we're not. You know, so are we really looking at the last few years of this national test and saying, these are the areas that they focus on, and looking at our own curriculum to say, well, we don't focus on this area at all? So our kids, just like Carrie said, if attendance was an issue, why isn't it an issue in science, but it isn't that? You know, so I, I, I get your point on where you're saying that, so I wanna know if we're really digging down and looking at, this is what we should be teaching, but we're not.
Well, and, and to tag onto that, you talked about how you're meeting, you're looking at the data. I guess, how long is that gonna take, and how long are we gonna implement something that you start to see noticeable results?
Well, that's why we look eight to ten weeks, mostly, we, we really feel like ten weeks is a good measure, we're not gonna keep using a strategy or, um, or an instructional methodology that we feel isn't working for that particular child, right? So that's, that's happened, that we're, we're, the child's getting intervention, and we feel like we're doing everything we need to do, well, then this is the right intervention for that child. So we collectively talk about, okay, we'll make suggestions collectively, and it's quite colludal, um, where we're talking about what things are you using? What things do you think we could be doing differently, and, and I think all those, um, teachers, all, I mean, excellence in teaching is what's gonna change things. Um, the research tells us that performance scores increase when teaching excellence, so that's what we're working on. We're looking at, um, how, where our teaching aligns to the New York State standards, because it could be just a certain way that we teach to a standard that can have a kid pick that, so that answer rather than that answer. So our curricular alignment to the standards is also something that we're looking at too, right? Yeah, so that's pretty big too.
Well, we've been struggling in math for years, and I, I know this is your first year here, but we've been struggling for a minute. When did we get this New York State data? This is, this is for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, when did we get this? It was on the bar road in October, October, November, and here we are in February, and we're doing this. So what have we done between October, November, and February? You already mentioned it was eight to ten weeks of, you know, reviewing. Yeah, but the eight to ten weeks that you were talking about analyzing, reviewing, whatever, well, we're well beyond that, so we should be implementing it at this point. Or are we just now looking at it?
Well, didn't you say you were implementing before?
We started and when we got freed up with the, with the math teachers after maternity leave, we inter, we started having the extra teachers pushing into classrooms. We had pullouts taking place to give more individualized instruction to help meet those needs. That occurred in eighth grade, really, the ninth grade were the two main focused areas, because of the eighth grade assessment, to build the skills for, not just the state assessment in eighth grade, but the algebra regions as well. So those are the areas that we're trying to really hit home on.
Yeah, I did see the algebra is a little low too, yeah.
I was just gonna answer your question, Teresa, about are we looking at those assessments? So both these put together what they call a feedback, and they kind of compare the difference in the regions, we're telling one in our region, and they go through each assessment and just read over six years, and they go to do item analysis, look at every single question, and tell you how, what percentage of the test made up that question, right, or that standard, I should say. Um, and so we've done that with grade four through seven, the teachers, and we've looked at those feedbacks, we've had conversations about prioritizing the standards. Fifty percent of, of an assessment is made up of these five standards, are we hitting that all year long, are we spiraling, are we, you know, making sure that we're teaching all the standards, but really heavy hitting the priority candidates that the district has, you know, for the BOSI that they identified as a priority. And I do wanna just note that at Santa Ana for grade four through seven, on the data assessment, here to the region, in the past six years, we've had like, uh, nineteen out of twenty-one, twenty out of twenty-one, but in this last school year, based on our assessment, grade four, we're all sixteen out of twenty-one, so there's made gains, or growing, the teachers are, are usually, you know, for course, they're getting from BOSI, then the NWA data, and our students are growing, so, you know, that item analysis support does help. And we do have conversations about that, in that end of the life.
At all, at all, I'm sorry, at all of our meetings that we've had so far, there have been two, ten-week meetings, we have had on some, there's a pretty cool celebrations actually, where children have been moved from tier three to tier two, and tier two and out, we've had multiple celebrations, ten kids, eleven kids, four kids, eight kids, so, one of the concentrations now is, is, um, concentrating on early intervention in the younger grade, so that's coming up through. So we're, we're gonna see results as we go on, because we're hitting them hard when they're, you know, when they're younger and we're figuring out what works best.
Well, that's fine.
So just a couple of points. We have seen it decline, and we, Mr. John, you're right, we have struggled, we've been up and down with mathematics for the past several years. And I don't wanna blame the pandemic for anything, because it's our responsibility to close those gaps. But we're going to see areas such as mathematics take the biggest hit, um, especially at the high school. Because it's very sequence-based, right? So the students who are in some of those performance at the high school right now, particularly with regions exams, regions exams didn't really change, there is no pre-pandemic, post-pandemic change. So if we have a student who's taking the ninth-grade algebra exam, and we go back two years to maybe when they, we were in a, uh, remote environment, we can pretty much knock off eighteen months of consistent instruction, and we really can't expect the same results, right? Two years later, when they sit down to take a regions. That isn't an excuse, that's a little bit of a reality, so I think it'll be important to take a look at those regions results compared to the region. I also wanna know that we sort of made this assumption that the students coming to us are not performing where they need to be. Next meeting, we're gonna see our, uh, four through eight Santa Ana Intermediate is gonna present their data that they have, the mid-year data. And I think you're gonna see that that isn't necessarily a safe assumption. As Mrs. Beaver indicated, there's some significant growth and achievement that's occurring there. And what we need to do is make sure we bridge that, but we need to look at things a little bit more collectively, um, and sort of see where we're at. There are a couple of areas, as we have seen, that are concerning, right? Uh, you know, and you're right, absolutely, attendance can't be tagged for everything, because students are doing much better in certain areas, which would tell us everybody should be declining across the board consistently, you're a hundred percent right. Um, so we still have a math problem. I think you're gonna see some pretty significant growth, especially with our economically disadvantaged students in ELA, which has been a focus for the past several years, um, which will be exceptionally good news, uh, when that is presented. Uh, but before we make some of those sort of assumptions, although many of your questions are exceptionally valid, um, we have a dip in graduation rates, uh, a little bit, about two or three percent. Our high school district graduation rates are concerning. So the real question is, how are we supporting students who aren't in our high school but are attending classes elsewhere? So that is an area that we need to focus on, because an eighty percent graduation rate compared to a ninety or ninety-one percent graduation rate is significantly different. Uh, so we can see that students who aren't at our high school, but we're still responsible for, are performing where they need to be. Uh, we also know that the population we serve is more vulnerable to changes. So there is a direct relationship between, um, literacy and math skills compared to when we correlate that with, uh, socioeconomic status, plays a, consistent across the board. Um, and what we need to do is make sure that we're compensating for the, the challenge that students who have an economically disadvantaged background have. Right, so we have interventions in place, we have smaller classrooms, and I think you'll see next week meeting that some of those are starting to pay off, expect many of those are starting to pay off. So, well, there are some things, and we always have a tendency to gravitate toward the areas of concern, so that we can make improvements. But there are, and you'll see next, uh, meeting, that there are some very positive changes that are happening.
Okay, yeah, I don't wanna keep beating up this subject, it's one of these things that I think we need to see more, yeah, but I always caution, careful when you give us data. Transparent.
I think we, well, yeah, we, we welcome it, these are very good points of topics, and it is what we do, right? I mean, that's the highest purpose for our school, so, so we are open to any criticism or recommendations, but we're also looking forward to sharing what we are doing and changes that we're making.
Yeah, I made a mistake, I, I thought it was algebra, but I'm not a true, geometry. But if we can beat that up at another meeting.
No, but if you remember, last year, it was the algebra, and that, yeah, that geometry is a nice order, it's that same cohort moving on.
And that follows, right, they, you know, those students who are, what, in tenth and eleventh, well, eleventh grade right now, particularly. Those are the students who in their critical middle school years didn't have a consistent formal instruction. And now when they hit the regions, we talked about this three years ago, because we knew it was going to happen, we put interventions in place. But it's difficult, right, for a kid who gets hit down for geometry, who missed, let's just, on a conservative say, a year of mathematics instruction, and that's, yeah.
Well, but see, but the, I get it, but I don't necessarily buy it, because again, I'm looking at this page that shows our percent region-state benchmark obtained in June twenty-three. We've got one serious dip in geometry with sixty-two percent. Now, if we're talking about grading, we failed, we failed that class, we failed those kids, and if we knew it was coming, we shouldn't have done something different and fixed it, because I look at all these other ones with a ninety-six, eighty-six, ninety-five, you know, percent of the benchmark obtained. They made it, it worked, we just failed this one group. So that's why I said, I mean, there's, there's a lot more that we can get into with this. But personally, I'd like to see a little bit more of that cross-building data too, and how does that look? And instead of us sitting here beating up Chris and Lloyd because their data doesn't look so great, we gotta understand that it comes from intermediate, and theirs comes from prospect. So I, I'd like to see the whole picture.
I wanna see where we are in the next, the next assessments, to see how we'll increase that with, uh, hopefully increase that with the intervention.
We'll see that until next February.
Well, we, well, we just have the one, we could do probably, um, winter and spring, from May, is my guess.
Schedule it. Hey, there we go. Buddy, you heard it here. There we go.
Nice try for July.
Thanks, guys, thanks, everyone.
Any other questions, comments?
What about Dale? I see Dale on there.
No, I'm good, I just think the math, you know, we have to figure out where, um, when do we drill down, where, where's the, uh, where's the breakdown, I guess, and then, you know, ta- target that. Where's the breakdown, I guess? And then, you know, ta- target that. You know, this has been an, an ongoing problem for us for, for years in math. And I just think we have to identify what the source is and, and, uh, fix it.
Agreed. Thanks, Dale. All right. Nobody else has anything? We'll move on to our budget presentation.
How exciting.
I guess it's.
I did it. We love budgets.
Just give me a short tweet.
Oh, love that even much.
So obviously we're in here for. So tonight's the first one. Um, and you'll see me every meeting through May. When you're excited about that. So in looking at this, this is our revenues. The orange line is what I'm projecting for this year. The blue line is where we currently are. And state aid, it says thirty dollars, but it's really millions. So pay attention to the bottom of this, this millions. Um, we're looking at thirty million, uh, coming in from stated. Uh, from the executive budget, from the governor's budget. We have no idea what, um, will actually pass. They have until April first to do that. Whether they'll do it on time or not is remains to be seen. Um, impact aid. I've got it equal to this year with a big old green, uh, watch on there, whatever you wanna call it. And it will change based on where we end up with, um, the expense side of the budgets. I'm still hammering away. I was a little frustrated because I was hammering away and my system shut down and I lost a bunch of stuff. So starting over. Um, indigenous tuition and transportation, you'll notice there's a big decrease. I'm still investigating and trying to figure out why. Our tuition rates dropped. Quite a bit from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three. We're still investigating why. And then once I figure that out, I will. So that's why I do feedback because I don't wanna over, um, budget that way. Fund balance reserves pretty close to where we are right now. Uh, this is three million versus one million. Reason being interest rates and the amount of cash that we have on hand. Here's break in on the interest, which is amazing. Uh, taxes, it says zero, but it's two hundred and fifty thousand again. So obviously two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the seventh year in a row. We are remaining flat. And what do we know? We know that our final art funding is gone as of September thirtieth. So that means that any positions that are in there that we wanna retain, we need to absorb interest on our plan. Still costing that out right now. The yellow mark for insurance for property liability and vehicle insurance. Um, I got off the phone with these guys after I had submitted this to Janet. They're looking at, they're guesstimating between a four and a six percent increase. They can't really say what it's gonna mean yet because the actual insurance company hasn't given us the information yet. Because they're still responding to, uh, child victim act, uh, cases. There's a bunch of flooding that occurred and other natural disasters that occurred around the state that are also pushing up rates. Um, so there's a lot of stuff happening on the insurance industry and why our rates may be. Going up. Hopefully ours are not gonna get up as much as somebody who's not in the consortium. For example, last year our rates went up about four and a half percent. And for those that were outside the consortium, they went up between six and seven. So hopefully we'll. Be much lower again. Uh, salary increases for the contracts that we have open, uh, S T A is at a four percent, S A S is at four point four. C S U at four, S S O is in negotiations as well as confidential managerial folks. And superintendents are at three point three. Benefits, workers comp, there's a two percent increase in the premium. T R S increased from nine point seven six to ten point zero two. That's the estimated. They haven't given us final rate yet. And E R S goes from thirteen one and fifteen two. So T R S is on the instructional certified staff. E R S is everybody else. So those costs are tagged onto their salary. Health insurance is out of this world. They're telling us it's between a fifteen and a twenty percent increase. If it was a ten percent increase, it's gonna be, it would be an increase to the district of four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. If it's a fifteen percent increase, it's about seven hundred and fifteen. If it is indeed a twenty percent, it's nine hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar increase to us. We can afford that. I don't know what some of the other districts are gonna do that. You know, this is on top of the other benefits that are increasing. Uh, and that's based on the existing, uh, people that we have on the policy right now. We have just under two hundred as single and actually just under two hundred as, uh, family as well. It's pretty close. It's almost fifty fifty, which I was surprised. Uh, retirements, these are the known ones as of today. We have one administrator, one teacher, two bus drivers, two custodians and cleaner. And one cafeteria staffer. Um, they have until March first in order to, uh, give us their notification for retirement. To be included in the retirement awards, et cetera. So the majority of people that do retire will let us know before March first. Oh, unknown. What don't we know? As I indicated earlier, the, uh, final state aid, uh, numbers, we won't know. Maybe not until even when we ask the board to vote it on, who knows? Additional retirements, again, that line up three one. At the SO contract is in negotiation as well as confidential managerial. So I don't know how much those have gone up. No, I did not include in there. It's not really unknown, sort of known, sort of unknown. There's a lot of requests when the budgets come in for new positions or new programming and things like that. So Mark and I will, Mark and I and Camille will sit down and discuss all those and figure out where we wanna. Um, say, well, no, we can't do that this year. Let's, let's put that aside and keep it on, you know, keep it on the planner board, so to speak. And we'll go ahead with these things. So those kind of things will negotiate with, with the individual department has and principles. So we'll come with a good number. So, um, next is the twenty-seventh. And that will be the first presentation on actual numbers for district office facilities and transportation.
Twenty.
Yep.
Question back to health insurance. So we're looking at ten or fifteen to twenty percent estimated. Is that on our end or is that gonna hit the slate as well?
Both.
Yeah.
Yeah. The numbers that are in the presentation is what it's gonna cost the district. So that's eighty-five percent of the total. The other fifteen percent is on employee.
Yep.
Yeah. Any else?
Yeah.
Not yet. Yeah, that's all right.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty. Next, we'll move on to communication. Do we have anybody? We do. All right. Then we'll land the federal sets here. Anything?
All, all that.
Yeah.
Maybe it's a little easier than here, you know. Um, I really actually appreciate all that information, especially with this on, a lot of. The federal title six grant is based on hybrid academics and culture. So presenting assessments for most of the things to our I P Cs and other things. Part of the job. So some of the concerns that Gary's brought up, um, some of the things that are discussed are obviously going to be discussed at this meeting as well. And we're actually at our I P C meeting tomorrow night. Um, so it's, it was good to hear, um, some of the back and forth, some answers I can use time to give them, so to the D A help. Um, you know, teachers back to maternity leave, the platform, that one, just sort of things that we're able to. Give to I P C as well, um, knowing that we are doing something because obviously. The school has a ton of money and Title VI does not have that much. So if there's any help that we could have, we have a public, it's a supplemental. So if there's some kind of idea, some kind of temporary position or anything like that, that is kind of what ideas pop up at these I P C meetings, as a example. Um, and I, you know, I'm keeping that to the board and I P C and administration. Um, so just, I'm glad that you'll give my back on this. It seems like we're somewhat steering towards the right direction. Hopefully the next couple of, uh, you know, things will have some increase there, um. I just wanna also mention really quickly, um, I'm super grateful, um, to have gone to school here, to work here, um, working with other. Uh, district, uh, Title VI directors and from across the country. Um, so, so fortunate to have what we have here in a beautiful facility, lots of new. See that and know that we're striving so hard for all these things to come into, you know, our practice rooms. You don't really get to see that with many schools out west, especially with a lot of community and individual schools. Um, to get a room like this packed, it is nearly impossible. So, um, just the effort being put forth and just so proud and then I can't wait in my case to come to school and all that. So, um, that's just off the top, um, some things with Title VI really quickly. Um, we also have, um, Shay, I believe she's been with us as well. They just gave a quick update on some of our indigenous, um, youth council stuff. Um, in that New York City trip, but really just today, um, was, um, we are actually later in the, um. Agenda, we're gonna try to open up an indigenous community account with the school. Um, obviously we are kind of a separate. Uh, we don't, we don't have an account for school. We have the Title VI fund and these things off that. But a lot of our programs, like the youth dancers, I P C itself with official meetings, um. There's no room in the, uh, federal budget for food and actual things like that that we can. We start this budget, um, we start fundraising for this budget so we can kind of help with our, you know, maybe some pizza for S Y D at certain times. And our youth council and, and official meetings for I P C and things like that, that our federal budget is paying us. Um, so we actually started a fundraiser at the nation with the next Sunday. I think we made about seven hundred and seven dollars just from that day. Um, so that was, um, what I turned in to, for today to open that account with, um, as well as we're still fundraising with. Uh, my parents are fundraising that with students, um, with the raffle. Um, and there's a few, um, items on, on the raffle. If you guys want to look at the. School social media, my social media, we have indigenous Title VI page now as well on Facebook, um, all the raffle information and everything down there as well. We're gonna get it on that. Um, we have some great items there that were donated. Um, other than that, really we have, um, a couple of fun things coming up. We have a big, um, girl cross clinic that a lot of us have been working on, Chad, Johns, Jesse, a lot of these. Um, have been working on this, uh, cross clinic. We're gonna bring a couple, uh, women's, we're gonna show me, uh, nationals and cross players, um. Down to our, to Vets Park and we're gonna run a skills and drills clinic as well as before that have. Um, um, mentor presentation, um, with a lot of deal about mind and body wellness, nutrition, career preparation. It kind of hurts you. And so, um, really fun. That'll be on March twenty-third. Uh, we're kind of just now spreading that out this week. Um, so you look out for that flyer. Um, other than that, um, we actually do have a. Half day assembly at the Seneca Intermediate School in March, uh, I think that was fifteen. Um, was the half day. Um, so the only, I think everything's under that. Uh, we're all set to go. I just was gonna actually have Chad and talk to Chad about, um, on master library. I think we booked the gym for that day, for that half day. Um, but all we have to do is approve to that. And I think that is all been assembled with these super funding already go there. Um, yeah, other than that, I wanna just swing it over to, um, Shay and she's still on, but there's a little update about. Our, um, indigenous youth council. Now there's gonna be. For the first name, I believe, I felt as of today as well, it was the, it used to be the Allegheny Indigenous Youth Coalition. Um, our student base group that kind of the decision that they wanted to change. So maybe Shay would have her a couple of words about that.
Can you hear me? All right. Yeah. Some of the students that were in the group this year, um. Wanted to change the name for a variety of reasons, um, but I think they just felt more comfortable with the indigenous youth council. So they took a vote and we submitted the stuff and hopefully that will be approved later. But, um, we are planning a trip, um, hopefully to New York City. We're going to visit the, uh, Museum of the American Indian, excuse me. We went a few years ago with a group and the youngest of that group is now graduated. So we wanted to go again. And the last time we went, we actually went to DC. So this time we're gonna try New York City. Um, there's actually a pretty neat, um, indigenous owned clothing, um, store we wanna check out. And then when we go to the museum, we're hoping to meet with, um, some museum staff to talk to the students about. What the different jobs are at the, the museum in New York City, the one in, um, DC and then just museums across the country. But what it takes to get into a museum like that, what kind of education do you need? What kind of experience prior? Um, and then of course the tour of the museum as well. We're hoping to take ten students who are on our, um, indigenous youth council. And, um, that's for May. So if everything gets approved tonight, we're gonna continue going with that. Um, I'm the group advisor, so I'm chaperoning and, um, hopefully we're taking Rachel Wolf with us as. Um, a longtime teacher for these students to kind of help with, um, some of the planning and some of the touring, um. And then also. The indigenous youth council over the years has raised a lot of money. And because of COVID, we really haven't been able to spend it. So after this trip and their annual donation to the Seneca history class. They will deplete their account. So we're gonna do another, um, shirt fundraiser hopefully for M M I W. Which I don't know if anyone reads about it or stays up on it, but it's also been called. M M I W G two S or M M I W P for, uh, missing murdered indigenous peoples. So the group will kind of decide what they want to go with. Um, hopefully someone in the group will come up with a new shirt design and we'll get that rolling. Because, um, when we do the M M I W and the Every Child Matters shirt sales, uh, we do such a great job, um. So many people want to buy and then, and really what we've been able to do lately is order extra and then they sell. Because I'll get someone calling or emailing like, oh, my goodness, I forgot to place an order. Do you have any left? So it's a really great fundraiser and it's a great chance for this group to educate others. Because you know, everyone in the school usually, you know, puts in an order, but we put this out on social media. We put this out there. And, and we've had people from around the country see it in order. Um, so it's a great opportunity for them to educate and spread awareness on some pretty important topics in, um. In our communities and across, you know, indigenous communities. Um, I think that's all I had. Right, Aaron? Is that it? The trip, the name?
Yeah, yeah. Think about it.
Any questions?
No, no. Love that name, too. Yeah.
Huh?
I wanted to go, I was gonna go, um, we're actually having Jake take your go at one of the reasons to help out, um, with way better script advice. But my baby, I mean, right around the same time. So I was like, well, my wife, my daughter. So I'll be there. Can't make it this soon. Thank you, Jay.
Well, thank you for the updates, both of you. Great. With that, we'll move on to, uh, central office message. So Dr. Penchola, you wanna lead us off?
Sure. We already talked about some of the stuff that I had here. Um, but I just wanna welcome everybody who's here. I know a few of us didn't settle in. Um, cause it's kind of a long one, but thank you those who are hanging out. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Um, and you know that, um, we also enjoy visiting you, uh, in school too. So nice to see you here tonight. Thanks for coming. Um, one of the things I wanted to mention actually about math. And our instructional, our math instructional coaches. Um, last year did a book study on building thinking classrooms. And building thinking classrooms, um. Has made us, um, a significant impact on the way, not in the way our children are receiving. Mathematics instruction because it's more conceptualization than computation. But teachers are thinking about teaching that differently. And, um, it's actually a pretty, um, exciting initiative that's going on that is impacting, um, math. In the middle, in the high school. Um, they are, uh, reporting weekly how excited they are about it. And, um, wonderful thing about our instructional coaches is that they, if they find something that they wanna study. They study it well and then they provide professional developments for our teachers. And once teachers start seeing our students enjoying and succeeding, it kind of becomes, uh. You know, a win. So that's what we're seeing with I P C. They think they can positively impact. Um. And the other thing I wanted to say is, um, so one of the things that will help, um. Student achievement is engagement. And, um, one of the things that we have been talking about is our commitment to, um, restorative practice. And, um, this week I had a meeting with, um, a consultant, um, from restorative practice. Um, Catherine Childs and I know Lacy, who headed up that meeting. And we have decided to make a solid commitment to restorative practice. And, um, we will be meeting monthly and talking about how to build this across all three schools. So that, um, our students will feel that positive impact of different decision, good decision making. Um, and make school that place that they wanna come in there more engaged with learning, which comes out in the wash better. So all these things that we're working on, you may not see results today, but we're working on building, um, a culture. And, um, I think this restorative practice commitment is one of the ways that we're gonna be getting there.
Thank you. Sure. Karen?
Uh, I got nothing. Just focusing on the budgets.
Just focusing on the budgets.
All right. All right, then we'll move on to the world message. We'll start with, um, Christian about giving us off.
Yeah, well, hello everyone, uh, and, uh, good to see everyone here tonight. I just want to thank our presenters. Um, follow how we're to put into, uh, into the presentations you gave us tonight. I know a lot of what you might seem put all our information together. Thank you, Aaron, Mr. Serum's on. Um, everybody else, uh, thank you. Oh, to Turner, thank you guys. All the work looks amazing. I know they're not here, but you know, they hear this. I appreciate that. So, um, that's really it for me.
Okay, Tracy.
Um, welcome to all the students there here. Um, I'm gonna say congratulations to Mrs. Beaver. I read that in the agenda and I'd like to welcome all of the staff that will be coming on and also, um, congratulations to the retirees. Um, I think that's about it for me.
Same, the, uh, one of the presenters for coming out. As usual, everybody that, uh, made time tonight to come out, um, willing, willingly and required, I guess. The, um, and, uh, to the night for a meeting due to the fact that, uh, it looks like winter finally arrived for one day. So, yeah, everybody has to remember there's two brushes now when we go back outside, but the, um, but that is just, uh, some sports are ending up. Just, uh, shout out to them. It's, uh, it's amazing the, uh, I'm one, I guess, one of the old people now that still get the only in times paper version. And, uh, it, it's amazing how much of our school district is represented in, um, the sports sections, the, the column last week. I just wanted to congratulate for a lot of those programs, uh, their successes.
Awesome. Dale, you got anything from Florida?
Well, the weather's been kind of nice down here, so. Uh, no, I, I, I really miss being, being there with all you guys. Um, and thank, thanks Ted for keeping my seat warm for me. Yeah, um, I also like to say thanks to all the staff um, for doing everything they do day in and day out for all of our students, you know, academically, socially, emotionally. You know, it makes a big difference. Um, and happy fat Tuesday and happy, um, happy Valentine's Day tomorrow to everybody. That's all I have. Thanks.
I'll keep it short and sweet tonight. Thank you all for everything you do. All you guys, thank you. Thank you for everything you do for our kids here.
Okay, I'm gonna end on, um, I was thinking about this earlier. But, um, I'm going to say to everybody that's out there, whether it's a student, a teacher, an administrator, board members that I want to promote the, if we see something, say something. We, if we see something that's working good, let's say it and spread it. If we see something that's working bad, let's say it. So we know, you know, we, we saw some data tonight that didn't look the best. But we said it and we're trying to make improvements on it. You see data that looks good. Um, so we know what can be successful. So let's build on it, just like we said here tonight. And, um, it doesn't matter whether it's academics, um, whether it's athletics, um, whether it's personal, um. You know, it's a community. I just had this conversation with someone over the weekend that we are a community and it takes a community to raise a kid sometimes. And we all got to work together to do that. So, um, if you're a student and you see something that you want changed, just like Aaron, you talked about the, the name of, uh, the committee. You want to change it? You know, they're promoting it, they're empowering themselves. I think that's great. That's what we want. We want the kids to feel empowered. We want them to know that we're accepting of that. And, uh, I feel as a board member that we're open to any kind of change uh, to make our district better. That's what we're here for. We want to be better. Our board goal, how we make kids smarter, right, Carrie? Uh, that's what we want to do. We want to make them smarter. We want to make them successful. So if you're a student and you see something that needs to change, say something. If the teacher won't listen, go to an administrator or a counselor. If they won't listen, go to the superintendent or the assistant superintendent. If they don't listen, come on board now. You know, uh, all of us are here. We want to hear ideas. We want to do things that, even if it sounds perky or a little bit crazy, we don't care. We want to do stuff that works. And if it's outside the box, then it's outside the box. We don't care. Um, we are fortunate that we have resources that other districts do not, which means we can do things that other districts cannot. So, um, that's the message that I kind of want to get out there tonight. And again, I don't care if it's a teacher or an administrator or a board member that needs to talk, um. If there's things that are going to help us, let's work together to form the most successful district that we can, because that's, that's our goal. And to make our kids smarter. And that's all I have. So I'm gonna.
All right, just a couple of quick notes. Um, I know Mr. Berkozic has to head up shortly, but I just wanted to acknowledge the, uh, work that goes into what you see, um, coming up in the personnel agenda, which is all of the spread coaches. Um, you know, there's a tremendous amount that happens behind the scenes in recruiting and retaining the excellent staff that we have and that includes our coaching staff. So thank you, Mr. Berkozic and, uh, uh, Mr. Bennett for the work that goes into ensuring that our student athletes have good coaches, um, as well as good teachers. Then there were several ads during the Super Bowl that reinforced the importance and the impact that a coach can have on a student. And I think we started to see that academically with some of the information that was presented earlier. Um, also to our, just generally to our HR team and the ongoing effort that we have to recruit substitutes, uh, across the region, substitute teachers are exceptionally difficult to come by, but every meeting we have between two and five new substitute to are added to our, our roster. And that's important because when we don't have a teacher in front of students, um, and we don't have a substitute, we end up pulling other teachers and now disrupting other classes, which causes a greater impact on the learning. So the role of substitute in our school district is really important. And that takes me to the next piece because last week I had the opportunity to step into the fourth day of the four day substitute academy that we put in place, um, just recently. And that's with the work of, um, Kim Dry and Penny Beatty. So, uh, we're one of the only districts that I'm aware of that actually provides daily instruction for our substitutes as far as what they need to be successful in a classroom. Everything from simple operations to classroom management to instructional strategies, um, even where the bathroom is since sometimes, uh, so you hire substitutes and they don't even know where to eat or go to the bathroom. And what happens then is the substitute don't stay. And I know that from firsthand experience, uh, and we've sort of turned that around. And in talking with some of the teachers, uh, substitute teachers, several of them are retired teachers from other locations. Um, and what was consistent from all of those teachers, one from Long Island, Niagara Falls and whatnot was the emphasis that the district places on safety and security. Uh, they had indicated that they've never been to a district that has the resources dedicated to safety and security that we do. And it's always just good to sort of come to, you know, it's nice to hear things positive, but, um, sometimes it's a good reminder and a shout out to, um, to Haley for the good work that he and his team does, um, because if we don't have a safe school, then everything else that we put in place is not, is not able to function as correctly. So it was just good all the way around. Um, and I wanted to, you know, take note of a couple of people doing some good work. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Right, with that, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Tracy, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed, abstained, motion carries. We have no old business, new business. We have the annual, uh, election budget of voter registration day petitions and announcements. Uh, so we need a motion to approve of, uh, the date. Board member, um, it's going to be May, Tuesday, May twenty-first from noon to nine at the high school. Um, petitions will be available, um. When are they coming out? Tomorrow? Oh, boy. The last day for filing is May first, so we need a motion to. Motion by Carrie? Second at that. Christian, and second by Christian, all in favor. I oppose, abstain, motion carry. Item B is the creation of the special revenue account for the Indigenous Parent Committee. So we need a motion to approve that.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Tracy. Are there any questions on the new, uh, special revenue fund? Okay, all in favor. I oppose, abstain, motion carry. Item C, we are declaring surplus of some old items. Uh, so we need, that's some ECR. I need to explain what a VCR is for somebody. That's okay. Uh, so we need a motion to declare those items surplus. By Christian, second by Carrie. All in favor? I oppose, abstain, motion carry.
I was gonna say the DCR should be in this next item here of the donation.
We have a donation to the Seneca Urcoi National Museum, uh, which is the, um, appeal of the Great Spirit statue. So we need a motion to approve that donation, donation. Motion, motion by Christians.
Second.
Second by Tracy. Are there any questions? All in favor? Oppose, abstain, motion carry. Uh, next we have a donation, um, to the city, uh, for IPC of seven hundred and seven dollars. So we need a motion to approve the the donation.
To the district.
Oh, I'm sorry, to the, I said it backwards. Thank you. I'm sorry. So we need a motion to approve the donation. Motion by Ted, second by Carrie. All in favor? Oppose, abstain. And item F is the name change of Allegheny Indigenous Youth Coalition to Indigenous Youth Council. So we need a motion to, um, make that change effective January ten.
Motion.
Oh, boy. Okay, we'll give it Tracy.
Second.
Second by Trace, and second by Ted.
Third by me.
Third by Christian, fourth by here.
Fifth by Dale.
Fifth by Dale. All in favor?
So if this gets approved, what does that do for the travel and conference? Because that's under the previous name.
I just think about the one that puts it on the agenda.
Right, that was approved already under Allegheny Indigenous Youth Coalition. Now we're approving a change in the name, so.
It's okay? It'll automatically approve. Okay, all right then.
Good question, because I thought of that when I put it on the agenda.
Okay. And all trips associated. So we've got a motion by Tracy, second by Ted. All in favor? Opposed, abstain, motion carry. Dale's giving thumbs up. Item G is our special, he is very savvy, uh, is our special education extended school year from July eighth of twenty twenty-four to August sixteenth of twenty twenty-four. So we need a motion to approve the extended, uh, motion by Carrie, second by Christian. Are there any questions? All in favor? Thumbs up again, but Dale opposed, abstain, motion carry. Item H is our allowance distribution, um, for William Spader, seven thousand six thirty-nine, again, William Spader, two thousand two sixty-one, and Hoover for twenty-two thousand two fifty-six. So we need a motion to approve the allowance distribution. Motion, motion by Carrie, second by Ted. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed, abstain. Motion carry. Item I is our resolution issuing, uh, negative, uh, secret negative declaration, uh, and approving the lease of five oh nine Broad Street Salmaika and zero Eagle Street Salmaika. So we need a motion, uh, to approve that resolution. Motion by Christian.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor? Thumbs up by Dale, opposed, abstain, motion carry. Item J is our cataractus Allegheny Bosie's nomination. I won't tell you who it is, but it is Dale. Uh, for area eight. Um, so we have a motion by Carrie, second by Ted. Are there any questions? Give it a full, strong endorsement, right Dale?
It's about time we have somebody on the board.
I love it. I love it too, huh? We're excited. Favor.
Been a long time.
Opposed, abstain.
Abstain.
You don't have to Dale. If you don't choose to, you, you can if you want to vote for yourself.
Does it make it, make a difference though?
It's up to you, however you want to do it.
I'll vote, I'll vote aye then.
Adam, boy.
All right, uh, so we have all in favor and, uh, all opposed. Motion, Carrie. And item eight, we're going to move on to our personnel consent agenda. It is pretty lengthy. Item eight B is our approval of our personnel consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve eight A.
Motion.
Motion by Christian. Second by Ted. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I got one.
Okay.
So this is kind of confusing because we have the section under student teacher internship, practical, field work, outside agency. I understand the student teaching portions off in St. Bonaventure University, but PLC associates with Karen Markoff. Where's the contract? There's no contract in this. There's no duration, no time, no dollar figures, nothing.
Right, that's good she's not being compensated by us. What this does is, it's sort of like student teaching. Um, this is our process for providing access for, um, electronic resources primarily. So this, she's been working with us for years, but it will provide her with an email account, um, and sort of officially have our, us in our tracking system.
But we're not paying.
We don't, we have a contract through Bosie's for her. So we're not approving a contract for her. She's been with us for years and is continuing on the existing.
So what has she been doing?
Uh, she served and has served as our, up to this year as our required outside educational expert for compliance with the state, uh, status and development of the. Uh, there's a lot of words, right? I'm positive, yeah.
Mark, can I throw in here that, that we had a lot of people that there was like a revolving door of people with no tracking of what they had account wise in the district. This creates that tracking, they have to do safe schools. They do cybersecurity training. They do a lot of things that include security here. And then it's not tracked, like actual physical track that was here as opposed to like student teachers that would come and go. And we didn't have any record of them, like having accounts or we didn't do anything to help them build what they needed to build in the district. Or the email addresses started coming into play. It's, it's one of the things that just creates more security for us, if that makes sense.
But we're holding somebody else's employee.
No, it's, all, all this is doing is creating a paper trail of the people that are here so that I can create email addresses and I can request, make sure that they're getting the, uh, the access to the services they need within districts and that they're getting trained to protect student information and how to use our devices appropriately and all of the stuff that we do for all of our employees. This creates that system for us to, to do a better job of, of a lot of different layers.
And more comprehensively is it provides the board and transparent understanding for the community as well of who is in our schools. So for example, we have, um, Hillshire Farms has a, uh, family support. I have always said that, I've said that for years and she always is the first to laugh. So Berkshire.
Vir- Berkshire.
Yeah. Berkshire provide and has provided. But it's important for the board to say, okay, this person is authorized to be here, right?
Oh, right.
So that's what this does. It doesn't necessarily mean that there's a contract um, for compensation with them. But what it does do is it provides you with the ability to see who is in our schools. Same way we do with volunteers. Um, so the individual that we have with Berkshire, not Hillshire Farm, I don't know why that came out, with Berkshire. Was approved probably in July. Um, and. Uh, we're just sort of catching up and going through everybody else that has access to our schools. Okay. Sure, positive. It's Berkshire, not.
Did you make good hands? Okay. Do you have any other questions under the personnel consent agenda? Then we have a motion by Christian, second by uh, Ted. All in favor? I oppose, abstain, motion carries. And next, we have some introduction?
Yes, we do. Uh, do you want to pick it up? Mrs. Beaver, outstanding.
I do. Mrs. Beaver, would you like to stand? We have some. Not really. This is a special night for her. This is Nikki Beaver. Her beloved Seneca school principal with the diamond studded sneakers, as you may know. Today, we celebrate an important milestone in her administrative journey. In New York State, in the New York State education world, teachers and administrators are required to show exemplary work. And commitment to their roles. While serving the school community and their kids. Every four years of demonstrating this prominent level of professionalism. A school district honors these educators with a golden ticket tenure. Mrs. Nikki Beaver has graced us with this high level of professionalism. When a district believes that one of their educators is a keeper, we grant them this honored status. Nikki is always actively engaged with her Seneca school team and our administrative team. Teaching and learning are always central to her work and she does this with kindness, humor, and strength. She always has a warm smile for her students, staff, and families. And we're happy to have our own admin, administrative team. We congratulate and honor her in earning tenure at Salma go city central. Hey.
Yes, I do.
Thank you for believing in me and helping me to come and work here every day. Um, I started right in the midst of COVID, so I met all those faculty and staff. I'm doing both boxes. Uh, you know, on the computer and. It was really scary and intimidating, but they took me under their wing and we have worked together as a team. I have that. I keep pride in working with teachers side by side. Um, I, we worked with them and I think we noticed that for the last four years, we've grown. Last year, I had a perfect good joy across both buildings and I will forever regret that because I made a lot of really good relationships with. Um, staff and working with him and Aaron has been amazing. Chris was an amazing mentor. I'll never forget Floyd, you know, that little thing, but um, you know, I learned a lot and I just want to thank you and I'm glad.
Alright, well, while we're talking to Nikki, Nikki, do you have anybody that we need to recognize this evening? Alright. How about? Mrs. Oakes, no? Uh. We do have. Yes, Christina, quick. Christina, is that you?
Yes.
It is for food service. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Good to have you. This was a bit of a long meeting for you, but um, we're glad you stuck it out so we could recognize you personally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Do you have your speech ready?
No.
No speech?
Alright. Alright, no one else?
Okay, then we will move on to the budget vote and board member election vote announcement. Uh, for May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, so we need a motion. Motion by Kerry, second by Christian. Are there any questions? All in favor? I. Oppose, abstain, motion carry. And item nine is our board information reports, our Voces election call for nominations, our enrollment data for February. Transportation report and our first reading of policy thirty-four twenty. Uh, first reading of policies sixty-one seventies, sixty-one ninety, our upcoming events. Um, tomorrow is not only Valentine's Day, but also the Indigenous Education Meeting at four thirty right here. LGI, uh, the sixteenth is the perfect and excellent attendance breakfast at eight AM at the cafeteria. And then uh, starting the nineteenth through the twenty-third, we have no school for winter break, so I'm sure the kids are excited for that. Uh, the twentieth is our finance committee meeting that'll be hybrid five. And our next board of education meeting will be um, the twenty-seventh at five thirty right here. And with that, I need a motion to. Motion. Motion return, motion by Kerry. Second right there. All in favor? I oppose, abstain, motion carry. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Drive safe, because it is a little blustery, which makes Mr. John happy.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah.
Me, you're.